I'm praying extra hard.
I do this at work.
All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Everybody, please rise for the invocation by Pastor Israel Valdez Jr. of the United Pentecostal Church of Benita Springs.
God bless everyone who happen to be here. Greetings to all in the name of Jesus. It's a blessing to be here. The church, the address of the church and pastor, and it's in 28285 Imperial Parkway. Fridays, 7:30, Sundays, 3:30. We're gonna say a prayer. The Bible says in 1 Timothy, Chapter 2, "Therefore I exhort, first of all, that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings and all who are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceful life in all godliness and reverence; for this is good and acceptable in the sight of God, our Savior." Dear God, we come to you in prayer. We thank you tonight, Lord, for your goodness and your mercy. Lord, we pray for the city of Benita Springs, for the council members here tonight, Lord, for our mayor, Lord, for everyone, all the members here, Lord. We pray that you guide them, give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, so that they may make the right decisions, Lord, according to your will. We ask that your will be done, Lord, in this beautiful city, that you bless Benita Springs City and everybody in this place, God. We pray in your mighty name, Jesus, amen. God bless everyone.
Stay standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Purden.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Fullick.
Here.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Here.
All right. Public comment on agenda items. All right, seeing none. Wanted to see if we could just move the presentations to the start of the meeting, just so we can get them in and out.
Some move.
We have a lot of people there.
Some move.
Thank you. All right, then we will skip over to the presentations.
No, no, weren't we gonna do the public zoning?
No, no, that's what I just asked.
Oh, no, let's get rid of the zoning first.
No, well.
Motion to move the presentations to the first part.
Second.
Motion, a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purden.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Is it aye?
Yes.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, so AA, Presentation on Emergency Preparedness and Introduction of Partner Agencies.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This time, Tony Backhurst with Neighborhood Services is gonna come forward for a brief presentation. As we do every year, also in compliance with Florida Statune and FROC, we provide a brief presentation on preparedness and our planning purposes for the upcoming storm season.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, Tony Backhurst, Director of Neighborhood Services and Emergency Management. And I'm gonna try and make this as painless as possible and then get to introduce the partner agencies, but just gonna cover off our preparedness within the city. So every year, we have a variety of different things that we're compelled to do. In recent years, I mean, in what, 25 months, I think, we've gone through, it was Hurricane Ian, then we were brushed by Adalia, then Tropical Storm Debbie, Helane, Milton, so a bunch of storms have happened. So ongoing with just the response and recovery components of that, there's also the planning for the next year. So this year, we've worked, we now have gone from an emergency operations plan, which was more specifically to how the city would react to an emergency, any emergency, to an emergency management plan, which is in coordination with some of the other requirements that we're having to do with FROC and with the state, is turn it into a management plan, which is more of a mitigation, preparedness incorporated along with the old EOP. And that's what the city manager had showed you earlier, the 975-page document that we've just compiled. And a lot of work, but the preparation certainly assists with the response. So there's a whole bunch of things that do go on throughout the year. This is our second season of being a participant in the state's Florida Recovery Obligation calculation, which is FROC. And it started last year '24, and we're going into this year. And we also have to opt-in again by the end of August this year. So it's an ongoing, ongoing task for us. So we look, equipment maintenance, all year round, this stuff is maintained and made sure that we're doing what we should be doing. There's ongoing preparation. All of the departments in some way, shape, or form are touched by this. We've got, Matt, with Public Works, there's Storm Drain Maintenance, there's Laura with Communications does a fantastic job of doing ongoing education and providing information out. And then, of course, our partner agencies, who we do have this evening to speak with us, who are fantastic, there's outreach and coordination with them. And that's where we get into the acronyms, and I'll try to keep them to a minimum if I can. So the actually, the emergency management cycle works on mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. Anybody who works within this would rather we stay just in mitigation and preparedness. But for the last three years, we've been literally working all the way around constantly with it. The more time you have to do mitigation and preparedness is great, but when you're doing response and recovery, you're multitasking. And it's any emergency situation. So when there is an incident, we follow the FEMA National Incident Management System, which is NIMS. And this is a standardized format that everybody will utilize, so everybody's on the same page. You've got a whole bunch of agencies that will all work very different aspects of this, but it all works in this framework. And the Incident Command System, which is what the city would go under following a declaration of a state of emergency, is the ICS system. So we would cease to have a city manager and all the directors, we would go into what you can see up there on the screen, which is a simplified version of it, but is to give an idea. There's an Incident Command, and then you've got the command staff, and then you have operations, planning, and logistics, and finance. And this is done purely and simply to standardize and simplify the response. And I've found it easiest to put like the little box on the side when it gets into daily operations and you talk about IAPs and sit reps. It's an incident action plan, and it's what do we need to do, who's responsible for doing it, what resources are needed, and how are we gonna communicate? And it's those four things, and that's what the staff will be doing on the daily operations side. So resource requests, this is pretty much why the system works so well. It works on a, it's similar to an intelligence framework, it works in funnel in, funnel out. There's a choke point where the information needs to go. So at the bottom of this, you've got the Incident Command, which will be the boots on the ground, for want of a better term. For the EOC, and then going up, our local EOC at Fort Myers, Lee County, and then going up to the state EOC, they need the information, and they need it from the people who are in the area. Initially, there's a FIDA, which is First Impression Damage Assessment, which is done by Fire Department and police and other responding agencies. And that's to make sure it's safe for everybody to get out. Now, that needs to obviously get reported in real time, so the people that are making the decisions further up have a good idea of what is happening. We then go into, it's either called an initial damage assessment or a preliminary damage assessment, which is a quick overview of what is going on in the city. You can send over all the drones you want and all of this stuff, which is also useful information, but to have people going around to see, you know, how much water intrusion was there, how many roofs, actually talking to people, that information is vital, and it's done, now it's done very, very efficient manner. We utilize software, and it's uploaded in real time, so the EOC can see exactly what's going. So how does that affect resource requests? They're gonna have a pretty quick impression of the severity of the damage. And it goes up, if, we will, as a city, do whatever we can, but there may come a point, and we've had some storms where this is far beyond what we are able to cope with, we put requests through to the local EOC, and then at that point, then it's filtered out, and we'll get the response. So FROC, which is exactly what it says up there, the best way for anybody to understand is, it's like a voluntary audit that we put ourselves through with the state in order to see where are we. It's, they will, we provide all of our information on emergency management, they'll go through everything. It goes from procurement, finances, it goes to debris management plan, all of this stuff, which is why we now have a huge emergency management plan. All of this stuff, they wanna see exactly where the city is at. And then they rate us, and they rate us in terms of funding. So I'm trying, I'm simplifying it as much as I can, but it's basically, we get a score. And the score is then, it's a risk, it's overlooking it in a way, they want us to standardize forms, which is great. So everybody's using the same forms. Then what they're gonna do, procurement, everything is in a standardized form, our procedures, and at the end, there's an assessment. And the assessment is that we do a disaster readiness assessment. We provide all of this information over a year period. They will then score it and say, this is where you're at. That way, then, rather than waiting for FEMA to refund us, taking years and years like it has in the past, they're gonna look and say, you know what, they're pretty good risk, this is the number, and you'll get a percentage back. And you'll get it back far quicker. So how it works, you get 20 points baseline, that's just for entering into the system. Then the DRA will give you 40 points, and then the top one, which is the 20 points, is to do a post-disaster questionnaire, which is as soon as the event has occurred, you're getting extra 20 points. So the, out of 60 is where you look at, and we just got our score back, and I have Chris Campbell here, who's the deputy director, and he's the one who's compiled an awful lot of this. And I believe our score was somewhere around 41 or 42 out of 60, which means if we do the questionnaire, we would get 62% of funding upfront when it comes to an incident. So if that makes sense, that's great. If not, I'm more than happy to try and explain it, or have Chris explain it somewhere else. But it's basically like, the best way I look at it is, if you go, if you go and get pre-approval before you go and buy a car, you can go in with a little bit more confidence if you're going in, and then they're telling you what you qualify for. So it's almost like a pre-qualification. And I've also put in there, the little box is the new deadlines, we literally just completed our one for 2025 season, and they've already sent out that we've gotta get our stuff in by August the 31st to opt-in. So this is an ongoing cycle. So I thought I'd just give you some of the information from the National Weather Service, and they provided this towards the end of May. This is their assessment and forecast. They're saying it's gonna be a Lennada, which is an ENSO, it's El Niño Southern Oscillation. So it's not an El Niño or a La Niña, and so the global weather patterns are less predictable. And warmer than average, ocean temperatures forecast for weak wind shear, and there's also potential for higher activity in the West African monsoon area, which is a starting point, obviously, coming off the west coast of Africa. But as you can tell, I was never gonna be a weatherman in the way I'm doing this. One thing that NOAA has advised, they've had some, they have had upgrades, they're looking at a 5% improvement of the tracking and intensity forecasts, and they've also managed to give, the Tropical Cyclone Advisory's gone, you've got 24 hours more, where it was 48, now it's at 72 hours. And so everybody who's been through these knows, you watch the cone, are we in the cone, we out the cone, they've got an extra 24 hours in there. And they are now, in the bottom one, their Prediction Center, it provides advance notice of potential tropical cyclone risks is extended from two weeks to three weeks, which is good for people that wanna make that decision, whether they're gonna leave, and some people just do not wanna be here at all. So the time has increased. And they're saying 13 to 19 total named storms, six to 10 are forecast to become hurricanes with winds of 74 mile an hour higher, three to five major hurricanes are predicted. And I want everyone to understand, that's throughout the Atlantic, that's not just for us in Florida, this is the national forecast. And they've got 70% confidence in these ranges, and they also are gonna update this in early August, prior to the actual historical peak, once we start getting into peak hurricane season. And there's some names there, so if anybody has a name that I hope we never have to mention it throughout this year, we've got Dexter, and there's a bunch of Dexter and Karen in there. So there's some names that people are probably not gonna wanna hear throughout this.
Those both sound bad.
So that concludes my presentation, if there's any questions.
Tony, thank you, first of all, that was pretty comprehensive. My question to you is, we got about a 41 out of a possible 60?
Yes.
How do we go higher?
So there's many ways to go higher, and some of the things are, I will be honest, unattainable. They have some pretty lofty goals, and we are not a, we're not a very large city, so that has more resources. There's, I would let Chris speak to how we can improve our score, but we can certainly pick up one or two points.
Things that are attainable?
Yeah. Some things were identified that need to be put out to RFP or rework contracts, update policies. Anytime that there's an opportunity to expand, we are expanding, and it'll be rolled into the next year.
Are these things that are cost a lot of money, or is it just us directing efforts towards them?
Time and effort, time. It's more time, staff time.
Is that gentleman capable of doing it, Chris, or do we need you to do it?
Um, yes.
Thanks, Chris.
And then, Mayor and Council, we have each of our partnering agencies just to provide some confidence to the public of their assurances of their programming and their preparedness for this upcoming season, so.
So like Ben Apes, who's the Director of Public Safety for Lee County, who'll be coming up.
Good evening, everybody, Mayor, Council, staff. Thank you again for the opportunity to join you this evening. You know, it seems like we were just meeting a couple of months ago on recovering from Hurricane Milton, and here we are again, kicking off another hurricane season. At the county, we have been very busy, just as your staff has, we've been doing many of the same activities, trying to work on our processes and find improvements from last hurricane season and implement those as quickly as possible as we enter the 2025 hurricane season. On June 2nd, we held our inter-agency briefing with all of our stakeholders and partners, that's a meeting that has about 400 different people from across the community who get together to kick off the season and review the current policies and procedures. For this year, many of our policies and our processes are very much the same. We're finding small incremental improvements, a lot of major improvements were made after Hurricane Ian, we're continuing to implement those, but we are continuing to find small efficiencies, especially with some of the storms from 2024's hurricane season. For the community, we want to remind everybody that there's really three important steps that we ask everybody to take as we start hurricane season. First, we wanna make sure that everyone has a family emergency plan and has an emergency supply kit. This is a great time to get all of your supplies out, make sure that everything is refreshed, your batteries are new, all of your food that could potentially expire, that you've got fresh supplies for this upcoming season. We also want everyone to review your family emergency plan, and remember, that includes copies of important documents, many of those renew from year to year, so it's a good time to print out fresh copies. Make sure that you have a plan of where you would go in case of an evacuation order. That's very, very important. Also, we want to make sure that the community knows that, you know, while we do have public shelters, it's always much more comfortable to go to a family member or a friend's home or a coworker or somebody that's outside of the evacuation zones. If you have those discussions now, that's a lot easier than when we're in the forecast cone, as we were just speaking about a few minutes ago. So talk to your friends, your family members, your coworkers, find somebody outside of those evacuation zones, you'll be much more comfortable staying with them in the event of a storm. Secondly, know your zone and know your home. It's important to know your evacuation zone. When we make those announcements, you need to know exactly what zone that your residence is in. And also, if your residence was built, you know, early in the 2000s, the codes and standards changed, where most of those homes are now built to standards that can withstand most storms, as long as you're out of the evacuation zone for storm surge. And so you should know your home, know the construction of your home, and have confidence that if you're outside of those evacuation zones, that you can stay there if it was built beyond the year 2002 or 2004. And then finally, we want everybody to be ready in the event of a storm impacting our community, and when we do get to a point of ordering evacuations, you need to be ready to go. We hear from a lot of people that they wait too late in the process to be ready. We want everyone to take those steps today. And when a forecast, you know, starts to pop up on the evening news, that you're looking at those plans, looking at your kits, you're identifying loose items in your yard to bring in, taking all the steps necessary, so that when we do call for an evacuation, that's not the first time that you're taking the important steps to protect you and your family. Finally, just a couple of really quick notes. We really appreciate the partnership with the city. Your city manager and her team are exceptional. We always have a liaison in the Emergency Operations Center that works very closely with us during the events, and of course, we do teams calls, you know, typically daily, in some cases twice a day, sometimes three times a day, depending on what's going on and how quickly things are evolving. But that partnership is incredibly important to us at the county. I also wanted to mention that the Public Safety Center, which was the Emergency Operations Center previously, we've expanded on to the Emergency Operations Center. The Public Safety Center is now open, and we're operationalizing the new facility. We would welcome any of you that would like to come up for a visit and a tour to see the new facility. That's a 37,000-square-foot addition onto the Emergency Operations Center. It includes a central space for emergency operations, but also our Public Safety Administration, emergency medical services. And the second floor is a new consolidated communication center that includes our county's communication program, which dispatches for the Fire Department here, as well as Lee County EMS. It will also be home to the Sheriff's Office Communications, Sanibel Police Department, and Lee County Traffic Operations will all be co-located on the second floor of that center. So we're operationalizing that space now, we're doing the final checks of the technology and making sure that everything is ready before we start transitioning staff in, but happy to have any of you that would like to come up and visit and tour the facility. We'd love to make that happen. Thanks again for the partnership and for the invitation this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you've got.
Are you checked out the center on Ortiz Avenue?
Yes, yes, I am.
Fabulous.
Yes, thank you.
Any questions?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Next up is...
We also have LCSO here as well.
In regards to hurricane preparedness, I just wanna reassure everyone with the council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And you are?
I'm Lieutenant Rushburn, Lee County Sheriff's Office. Thank you. I just wanna assure you that all of our equipment has been checked. We already found our staging areas, which have been confirmed from previous storms to be very effective in our pre- and post-response to any hurricanes. We continue to maintain outstanding partnership with Benita Springs Fire Department in regards to kinda housing us with our shelter. That way, we have the immediate response post-storm to get back out, make our assessments, and basically get to work on recovery efforts or any kind of rescue efforts that need to take place. Just due to the previous hurricanes, it's unfortunate, but we've also become really good at what we do. We've developed strong operational plans, specifically tailored to our flooding areas or areas that are most impacted from those previous storms that we've experienced. And we've basically tailored those to, once we go out for our reconnaissance and our post-storm recovery, to take immediate action. And I would also like to thank the city council and its members. We have a great relationship where we can effectively communicate the needs of the city and take action. And those are directly related to Benita Springs Fire Department, too. We work hand in hand. You know, there's many nights during the hurricane, post and pre-storm, where me and the fire chief, we're sitting there trying to develop plans along with city council members on how we were gonna approach the next day and get the best efforts out there of our community.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
We have representative for Benita Springs Fire District.
Greg got way more handsome, I'm just saying.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. A pleasure to be here. Usually, you see Chief DeWitt, but I'm filling in tonight, so I'm Deputy Chief Andrew Schmidt. I wasn't sure I was gonna make it, we had a little brush fire going on, I don't know if you guys noticed, out east. It got a little out of control, but now it's taken care of, it's right on the line of Lee County and Collier County, and Collier's still out there right now, but everything should be toned down tonight for the rest of the evening, hopefully. Just to let you know, we are prepared, we have updated all our protocols, we've updated our contact information. As you guys know, our main department on Benita Grand, our main station, is gonna be the home for a lot of you, are more than welcome to come and to the South Geo Division along with the sheriffs. We host that every year. So we're all set up, we're ready to go. You know, we, let's see, like I said, we had our numbers updated. Fortunately, we do have a lot of user members on our staff also, which we do urban search and rescue, so post-storm, we do go out, we do surveys, we do use Quick Capture Survey 123 to assess these different areas that are damaged using the technology, so we do have quick responses. I do encourage everyone to evacuate when they're asked to evacuate. We will go out, but there is a point where we don't go out anymore. So make sure you evacuate when you're supposed to. We will respond as necessary, but we do, about 40 miles per hour above, we will stop responding. So, but we have boats, we have high-water vehicles, and we are ready to go. And like I said, you are more than welcome to come to Benita Grand when the storm comes. So, thank you.
Wait, everybody can go?
City Council.
I've been told.
Yes.
You don't wanna stand.
City Council staff.
Correct, it's, yeah, it's.
Yes.
The immediate response team of city staff is there. We do ask that if council members are in an evacuation zone, that they take heed to those warnings and evacuate as needed. And then that's the South Geo location that we provide the communications to the Lee County EOC. We also have representatives at the Lee County EOC at the same time as the spot we need a fire.
Correct. Thank you.
And I actually heard that by the union, certain folks aren't allowed to go and rescue, but then, as they say, white shirts are gonna go, 'cause that's, you know, it's, everybody wants to go, but union says certain people are not allowed to rescue.
That, so there is district policy, and we risk a lot to save a lot, right?
Yeah, you guys do everything.
So we always say, if it's your family member, what are you gonna do?
Right.
So we respond. But there is certain times where our safety is on the line, and we cannot respond because of our safety.
Yeah.
So, but we do respond 99% of the time.
I know.
So, but like I was saying, if people evacuate, that helps the situation. We had many times where we've had to go out, when we shouldn't go out to make those risks, but that was a risk that we were willing to take.
Now, we are blessed with great firefighters and sheriff's officers and 911, you guys are wonderful.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Lieutenant, if I may, I don't understand the term white shirts. What does that mean?
We're administrative staff.
Right.
We're chiefs, so we also come up with the policies, procedures, and make the decisions. We're chiefs, so we also come up with the policies, procedures, and make the decisions. So, when you have your incident command, you do have your levels. Your incident commander, which will be the chief, and we do a unified command with SO as well. And we make decisions through policy and procedure and safety.
So, basically, administrative staff don't go out on, on normal courses of rescues?
Oh, no, we go out sometimes.
Those are the ones that do...
Oh, no, we, we do go out.
I witnessed it myself, yeah.
Oh, that's right, I didn't understand this thing with the union.
Oh, yeah, no, they're allowed to go out.
Can Lieutenant please answer the question? Thank you.
Yes, we, we do have a staff that does stay in to, you have logistics, you have IAPs, you have plans to make. But if we're available, like, I go out as a division chief, and I will go oversee functions out in the field sometimes as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
And we have a representative from Benea Springs Utilities.
Good evening, Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of council, ladies and gentlemen of staff. My name is Alan Perry. I'm the Safety and Security Coordinator for your Benea Springs Utilities. And as of, as of all of you, I am a member of the utility, living here in town, and I am proud to say that our staff of almost 140 people are ready to serve, not only during a hurricane emergency, any disaster response. We, our incident management team has recently met, we've got our supplies together to last, or lasting during a response. We've met with our, our water, wastewater partners in the county, and we've also shored up our mutual aid agreements through with other utilities in the state. We have also, we're going through our five-year emergency response plan update currently. That will be updated, and that will spur an updated hurricane response plan for the utility. And that's all I have. Would anybody like to talk about stormwater? No?
Yep, one question for you.
Go ahead.
The pumping stations, that was a big problem in certain parts...
Correct.
...of my district, specifically District 5. There were upgrades done to protect the circuit boards, is that correct?
That is 100% correct. They're still being updated, we are still in the recovery stance from Ian. And a lot of our lift stations, pump stations, will, will now telescope up, so the, the storm surge will just go underneath and not inundate the panel.
Know that, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Laura?
Just a statement. Congratulations on all the awards won last night, or that were mentioned last night.
Thank you.
I'll go over them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, folks.
And that concludes our report on emergency management.
All right. So, the next presentation is an update by the Lee County Sheriff's Office.
Lieutenant Rush, from Lee County Sheriff's Office. Thank you guys for the opportunity to have me speak today and highlight the impact our unit has had over the past year in regards to the 2024 year. What I hope to show you is that enhanced police presence isn't just about numbers. It's about meaningful results, safer streets, and stronger relationships with the residents and businesses of Lee County. Beginning with the foundation of a public safety. In 2024, deputies assigned to the Benea Springs Community Policing Unit responded over 70,000 calls for service within the city. What's important to, to make note of that number is approximately in over 34,000 of those were self-initiated calls for service, meaning that it wasn't a call that came into 911. It was our deputies out on the streets, being proactive, looking for criminals, looking for speeders, enforcing the laws. And that means our deputies are out in the community, basically addressing the issues even before the calls come in. We also conducted over 11,000 traffic stops and issued more than 16,000 warnings and citations, with that about 40% of those being citations. We made 270 arrests within the city limits last year, many of them tied to traffic enforcement, narcotics cases, or property crimes. Of that number as well, there was 805, approximately, traffic NTAs issued, which means it was a criminal offense for traffic-related offender, and instead of taking them to the jail, they were issued a notice to appear, most likely as a minimal misdemeanor traffic offense. But the guys are out there, we're proactively targeting our problem areas specifically with traffic. You know, one of the biggest complaints that we get is traffic enforcement. People come down, they want to be on vacation, they don't want to sit in traffic, they don't want to get in car accidents. So, one of our major jobs is identify those areas that we have, that are most impacted by that, and proactively enforce and show presence in those areas. That way, we're showing that effectiveness to the community and hopefully providing that safe environment for people to travel through our city. With that, we didn't just enforce, we made the city safer. Crime dropped across several major categories, specifically within the city of Benea Springs. We saw a decrease of notable, reportable crimes compared to our prior year. These aren't minor fluctuations, these are significant changes that basically are from the consistent focused enforcement high visi- visibility that the sheriff's office has in the city. In regards to our pedestrian and traffic safety enforcement, we conducted over 609 traffic enforcement operations specifically last year. That included 69 crosswalk operations, making sure that are basically those that are traversing our downtown area, or specifically down by the Hickory Beach Corridor, that those crosswalks are being safely and effectively monitored to make sure that everybody's crossing the roadway safely, and we're, we're not avoiding any collisions with pedestrians. We also conducted approximately 41 motor and vehicle anti-racing operations. As you can see, and you've seen in the news throughout the, throughout the country, racing and motorcycle racing is kind of becoming a predominant thing. I can assure you that we are taking proactive measures to ensure that isn't an issue here. You're not going to see any, any intersection takeovers in the city, I can guarantee you We addressed also the no-through truck ordinances in the downtown area. We did 124 operations. Of that, there should be a number right around approximately 350 vehicles that we follow through that corridor, attempting to enforce. And of enforcement numbers, I want to say they were, there was maybe approximately five citations issued. Most of those vehicles were conducting business in other areas. In April, we launched our new bicycle patrol program. I'm, I'm very prideful in this because I was one of the instructors that kind of pushed the program. It's a great way to interact with the community, get out there and have those conversations with people. You know, people see the, the patrol car, it's a billboard, some do want to go speak with us, but when we're out there showing them that we're just anybody else, and we have the ability to step outside and have a conversation with them, it's, it's really effective. We conducted 42 bicycle-specific operations. Those range from anywhere from bicycle education to proactive enforcement. So, if we come along, people, you know, lights on bicycles are an issue. We're trying to educate and kind of provide that education, and then if the education is curbed, then we also provide the enforcement efforts to make sure that everybody's safe and traversing down through the area on their bicycles correctly. There were six arrested during those operations and a total of 76 warnings that were issued, as well as 44 contacts with community where interviews were conducted just to find out what their presence was. A lot of these bicycle operations are just during the daytime hours. You will see us out there during the daytime hours, and it is hot, yes. But a lot of our efforts also take place in the evening hours. The bicycles are an excellent tool and resource to use for a more stealthy, stealthy approach to proactive enforcement, where we can get, somebody's going to hear the car, somebody's going to see the car. I can almost guarantee everybody in the room knows when they see from a distance what a cop car looks like. This changes the game for that, you know, let's, let's just get a little bit closer to our clientele, hopefully that are going to be out there in the middle of the night.
Do you, do you have maneuvers that you use on the bicycles?
That is definitely a negative. No, we do not, we do not. Luckily, we haven't had any of those issues yet. I hope it stays that way. But it is a great tool. Also, recently, we basically added some e-bikes to our fleet. We have two e-bikes. This is just immensely helpful in reducing fatigue for the deputies, the mobility, the coverage. Obviously, you know, it's a physical effort pedaling a bike, so when I put a guy on a, on a bike for so many hours, he's going to, obviously, you know, his endurance is going to be taxed, he's going to start to, you know, feel a sweat and everything like that. The e-bikes are a very useful tool for us, where we can kind of prolong, and then we can start to spread out on enforcement from our bikes when we, when we head out. We also maintain a strong focus on our juvenile assessment and monitoring program. So, through this initiative, basically, community policing deputies work alongside with our county juvenile probation officers to conduct monthly home and precinct visits, monitoring youthful offenders. This ensures compliance, providing mentorship, and basically what we're trying to do, the goal of the program is to promote accountability while also providing guidance and positive guidance to the youthful offenders, to where they can start to make the correct decisions in their life. A large quantity of, basically, your misdemeanor crimes come from a bored kid that doesn't have anything better to do. So, we're trying to get out there and educate them, especially our offenders, making contact with them, their families, trying to provide that transition to get them pointed in the right direction. Of that, I will say, in, in 2024, we completed approximately 8,000 probation checks on our juvenile, basically, our juvenile assessment program kids, and we also conducted juvenile check-ins at our substation to ensure proper probation restrictions in regards to drug conditions or anything like that. On the investigative side, our impact continued. Community policing detective worked over 132 cases, made 23 arrests, and we maintained 100% prosecution rate. These cases spanned from arson to burglary and kind of everywhere in between. One standout case led to the seizure of illegal narcotics and stolen merchandise after a search warrant was served on a suspect's home who had committed a theft from a local pottery business. The suspect was sentenced to 84 months in prison. So, our, our follow-through and having that detective actively present in the community is very resourceful when it comes to our follow-up investigations. Our narcotics detectives were equally busy. They worked 43 drug investigations and executed several search warrants within the city limits. One of the investigations led our detectives to a suspect that was found selling illegal narcotics from his home. A search warrant led to discovery of stolen property, trafficking level narcotics, and that suspect was sentenced to seven years in prison. These were real threats to our neighborhoods, and we addressed them directly. And those, those efforts really disrupt any kind of illegal activity. Most of the time, obviously, these are networks that we're dealing with, so if all of a sudden somebody says, hey, so-and-so got busted, these guys are all over it, they're going to take their business elsewhere. I mean, what does all this mean? It means we built a proactive, community-based approach that's really showing results. We've reduced crime, we targeted serious offenders, and helped residents feel safe walking, shopping, and living in the city. We've done all that, all that while keeping our operations lean, professional, and well-integrated with local government and schools and our, and our even local fire department. I have a great working relationship with the city manager and with all of you. I see you at community events. I've seen you out there during the hurricane relief efforts. You guys are an active role, and I can't say again, I know I spoke with, in regards to hurricane efforts, but having everybody on the same team builds a winning, builds a winning team. If everybody's playing their role and everybody's making focus and driving towards that goal, we're going to get to the finish line. With that said, community members call us when something doesn't feel right, business owners of artists to their events, schools welcome us with open doors. We have a large presence at city events, anything from our holiday parades to our special events. And it basically sends a clear message to the community that law enforcement is here, we're a part of the community, we're not separate from it. It gives you that comfortable feeling that you can walk up to me and tell me that you don't see something right. You can tell me when you see something that seems suspicious in your neighborhood, and you want to make the call, but you're not sure if you should. Do it. Come out, reach out to us, that's what we're here for. Building those bonds, building those relationships is why the community policing unit succeeds as well as we do. We're grateful from the support from the city of Benea Springs. And I want to be clear, your continued support of the community policing unit is saving lives, building relationships, and making measurable differences in every neighborhood that we serve within the city limits. Of those events, I mean, in regards to our city events, the Celebrate Benita Memorial Day service, I mean, there's, I would say, numerous events quarterly downtown at our beautiful Riverside Park that we attend, we, we assist with. The community engagement that we have, along with the Cafe of Life, and working directly with Michael Robinson with the Cafe of Life, we do a holiday program, we do a backpack program where we go out and interact with the kids, these low-income kids that are, low-income families that are struggling sometimes, and sometimes struggling still from the hurricanes, you know? Everybody's still trying to somewhat rebuild from them. We do ride-alongs where we've gone with Cafe of Life to deliver neighborhood meals. We recently started to reconstruct our relationship with Benea Springs Assistance Office, and there are new directors in there. We were at one of the holiday meal giveaways that we participated in, and it's going extremely well. We're hoping to put together a, basically, a bike safety course, and we're going to kind of get that going. But it's building this network of Benea Springs Assistance Office, Cafe of Life, Salvation Army, like, these entities that are within the city combining to become a, just a well-oiled machine of working with the residents of the city. I could go on, on numerous community engagements. One of the ones that is always a hit is the, the ice cream truck. Lee County Sheriff's Office has an ice cream truck, and we're afraid to deploy it. So, if there's any kind of community events where schools or there's some type of, and I know we have a really good, the New Horizons Youth Center, and then the Wildcats out at Marnie Fields. We've gone out there, deployed the ice cream truck, spoke to the kids, you know, and when you talk about the transition, I've, I've lived in and around Benea my entire life. I, you know, I grew up out in the woods, out on East Terry when it was a dirt road. It was different. And these community bonds that we build, and seeing people and kids come up to our vehicles and with a smile, rather than, you know, kind of being a little skurdist of what, what we're about or what we do, that makes you just feel good wholeheartedly. And that's a kid that might be saved from going down a, a life of crime or something like that, just due to really good contact with the sheriff's office. And it's something that we stand by, it's something that I stand by and the rest of the troops as well. But, and basically, in the remainder of everything, I just want to thank everyone here. There's numerous times where we come into contact events, we have the full support from the city council, and I, I can't tell you how much we appreciate it. Having that bond, having that relationship, especially with a city member, and just everybody, the entire team that you guys have here, working for the city, makes it a safer place. The communication with us and giving the direction of, hey, I heard this is going on, having that communication is something that stands strong.
Thank you. Laura?
I just want to say, you guys are so fabulous. It's so much fun because you really do get into it with the kids. You know, at every event when there's music going, you'll see the officers, and then the kids will walk by and go, you don't got it down, and then they'll do something, and then the officer will do something. So, there really is this, you know, jive that is working, and it's beautiful. It really is, it's fabulous. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, Rush, thanks for the presentation, and, you know, I think we all feel the same way. It's great having somebody who was born and raised here, being part of our law enforcement community. Personally, I, I feel better. One question for you is, and I think especially people that are listening want to know, we all know about fentanyl, but is there anything else right now that parents or that we should be aware of that's a problem that you're seeing in our community and elsewhere?
We're not seeing an influx necessarily of any kind of illegal narcotics on the streets. I, I want to say, and I don't want to speak, but I know that there were some regulations that were just passed with, you know, there's hemp products that are out there, and I want to say that there was regulations just passed. I don't know the standing of them yet, I'm not even exactly sure if they were passed directly yet, but taking like the cartoon markings off of some of these, some of these things. So, it's, it's not so much that the kids, I believe, are doing illegal narcotics or trying to directly go for them, but, you know, a kid sees a worm on a, a plastic bag with a gummy candy in it, and I know me, I would have ate all of them when I was about 10 years old. I, I still probably do, I just will keep that under the table. But as far as, you know, I will take pride in this, when it comes to why does my phone ring most often? When it comes to what is, what is the direct drive and some of the things that we see in the, the city, I take pride in the fact that most of the time, our number one concern is traffic. And then the, the, the second concern, almost believe it or not, is people parking on the right-of-way down by the beach and our traffic enforcement on the beach. And that, that says something. When those are two of my most major problems that I have, that means we're doing something right. And I can give you this wholeheartedly, we're going to keep doing that.
Anything else? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, we really appreciate your time. All right, so now we'll move back to public hearings. Mike, you want to read the first one?
This is a first reading of a zoning ordinance of the city of Benea Springs, Florida, approving a variance from Land Development Code Section 4-1894 Paragraph B, which requires a water body setback of 25 feet along the north side to allow a setback of 15 feet from the abutting north side street right-of-way for a proposed single-family home on a residential property located at 26409 Bay Road, strap number 25-47-24-B2-00200.0240. Benea Springs, Florida, 34134, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Before we proceed, this is a quasi-judicial item. I'll go ahead and swear, and Mike, and any members of the public who wish to speak on I'll go ahead and swear, and Mike, and any members of the public who wish to speak on this item, Mr. Dolmer does. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. Good evening. Mike Fegan with Community Development for the Record. I do have a presentation. I'll leave it up to you if you want me to go through it. I'll just give you a quick synopsis of what this is and how we got here. So this is a very old property. It was created back in 1949, so it predates Lee County zoning regulations. It predates the city. It's very much an undersized lot for the zoning district that it's in, and it is bound by a water body on the rear and the north side. It also has a right-of-way on the north side and also on the west side. So it's a very constrained property in terms of developable area, if you will. The fact that it has a right-of-way and a boat ramp on the same property line is why we're here. Because when you look at that old 1949 plat, there is no indication of any type of water body or boat ramp on that side. It just shows up as a right-of-way. So when they came in for their building permit to be approved for a single-family home, which they're allowed to build, there was an issue with the setback, and it's because of the presence of that boat ramp there. It effectively changes the setback along that side from a 15-foot right-of-way setback to a 25-foot water body setback. So it eats in another 10 feet of an already significantly undersized property. So that is the purpose of the request. A similar request was approved by Lee County back in 1990. And in fact, they had approved a variance on three out of the four sides of this particular lot, but it was tied to a very specific building footprint of 957 square feet, which, if you're familiar with the area, out on the beach, Bay Road, that's a rather constrained footprint compared to what's built around it. So what they're asking for is relieved to be able to build something that's a bit more compatible with the existing development pattern, but they're only asking for one variance. They're going to meet all the setbacks on the other three sides. So the hardship is there. It's through no fault of the applicant. It's a significantly undersized lot. One thing I will make note of is that if this variance were to be approved, it would not hinder access to that boat ramp. The entirety of this request will take place on the private property of this applicant, and it will not affect use of the right-of-way or the boat ramp in any way. This case was heard by the zoning board back in May. They did vote to approve the request, seven to zero. You have the minutes attached to your packet. And with that, I can go forward with a more detailed presentation, or I can see at second reading.
Motion to second reading.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I don't need a presentation.
Longer presentation?
Are there any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a first reading of an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, adopting an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map to redesignate approximately 1.3 acres plus or minus from the public slash semi-public future land use category to the general commercial future land use category located at 25071 Chamber of Commerce Drive, Bonita Springs, Florida, 34135, providing a conflicts clause and severability clause and providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
Good evening. Mike Fegan again with Community Development for the Record. As you heard, this is a request to do a map amendment to your future land use map in the Comprehensive Plan. This is a very small-scale amendment, so this does not have to go to the state for additional review. This one stays in-house, but since it is an ordinance, it still does require two public hearings in front of you. So this has to do with the Chamber of Commerce Building, as it's more popularly known. It's a building that has been around since the mid-'90s. I think they applied for their permits in 1994. It was constructed in 1995, and it served as the Chamber of Commerce Building for many, many years. So when Lee County became a city in 2000, or I'm sorry, when City of Bonita became a city in 2000 and we adopted the county's Comprehensive Plan, what carried with it was a future land use category of a public or semi-public use over the property, which is traditionally the land use category that you provide for government operations and nonprofit operations. Other than that, there's really not a whole lot you can do on properties with that particular designation overall. The conflict is that their current zoning allows for a lot more to take place than what their future land use category allows for. And as you all know, this is no longer serving as the Chamber of Commerce Building within the city, and it was recently sold. So they no longer even have ownership of that property should they ever want to reinstate it. They couldn't. The building's been sold, and the land has been sold with it. So we are before you today because there is a use that is being proposed that is in line with the current zoning of an ophthalmology clinic, but is not allowed in that public semi-public land use category. So they're requesting what they feel is a more compatible category of a general commercial category. It's a category that you see up and down that US 41 corridor. It's a category that is around this property as well, so there are no compatibility issues. They did go through their paces. They submitted an application. It was reviewed by staff. It was reviewed by your local planning agency last month in May, and they voted unanimously to approve it five to nothing with that particular vote. I can go through a presentation. I can just ask questions. We do have the applicant and the representatives here. If you have questions of them as well.
Motion to approve, second reading.
Any questions or longer presentation?
I'm good.
All right. We'll see you at second reading.
Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on to consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second? Roll call?
Deputy Mayor Purdon. Councilmember Carr.
Hi.
Mayor Gibson.
Hi.
Councilmember Corey.
Hi.
Councilmember Fullick.
Hi.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Hi.
Any comments on consent agenda? All right. Item nine, public hearing. NMA.
This is a first reading of an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, adopting an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan to update the 10-year water facilities supply work plan, providing a conflicts clause and a severability clause and providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
Good evening. For the record, Jacqueline Genson with Community Development. This is a statutory requirement that we are required to do. So just some background, what Florida statute requires is water management districts go ahead and create water supply plans, and they do that every five years. And what the statute requires is that after 18 months of them adopting their water supply plan, local governments then have to go ahead, evaluate their comprehensive plans, coordinate with their utility providers, to make sure that there is adequate water supply facilities available for a certain planning horizon. So what we did is we coordinated with Bonita Springs Utilities. They are the primary potable water service provider here in the city. There is another private water supply provider, which is in Citrus Park, which is now known as Bonita Terra. So those are the two main sources of potable water supply here in the city. So what we did is, again, we coordinated with Bonita Springs Utilities with all of their current facilities and the facilities that they have in their capital improvement plans and facilities that are coming online. We worked with the Water Management District and pulled records based on their plant capacities, went ahead and formulated that into our water facilities work plan, and that is included as part of the application backup. So we have updated that water supply facilities work plan consistent with Florida statutes. So again, this is a procedural matter. Happy to report, we do have adequate water supply plan, supplies available. This is an amendment that is required to go up to the state through the expedited review process, so should council go ahead and motion to transmit to the state, we'll go ahead and send that up. It will be reviewed by the Department of Commerce and the other regulatory agencies for compliance. And hopefully, they'll have no comments, and we'll be back within the next two months for adoption.
Motion to transmit.
Second? Second? Roll call?
Councilmember Carr.
Hi.
Mayor Gibson.
Hi.
Councilmember Corey.
Hi.
Councilmember Fullick.
Hi.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Councilmember Bogaz. Deputy Mayor Purden.
All right. City attorney items.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I have two items this evening. The first item is, you recall a couple months back on Imperial, on the Imperial, we had a hearing on our residential plan development that was actually reducing a project, I think, from 16 units down to 10 units. There was a neighbor on the other side of the river who challenged. We had two cases going. The city is a necessary and indispensable party of those cases, although the case was mostly prosecuted, the defense by the property owner, BB Sunset Properties. BB Sunset Properties has proposed a settlement that the challenger is willing to accept that reduces the project down to six units to allow them to go forward. That settlement that you see before you would allow that as an administrative amendment to the plan development because it is lessening the project. I do apologize, there was an attachment that didn't come until late of the actual depiction of it. I'll make sure to get that out to everybody to review and get it into the file. If you have any questions, Morgan Hiller, representative of BB Sunset Properties, is here to respond. The actual challenger is in Africa at the moment, so we're waiting for his signature, but his attorney has been, has authorized this settlement to proceed. So we're moving forward with this to try to get this case resolved so there's no more expense to the city and that the property owner can move forward to their development plans.
Great job, Derek.
Do you need a motion to approve?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call?
Mike's like, um.
Jamie could guess.
Mayor Gibson.
Hi.
Councilmember Corey.
Hi.
Councilmember Fullick.
Hi.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Purden. Councilmember Carr.
Hi.
Hey, thank you very much. The next item is proposed in our local agreement with Lee County regarding implementation of their opioid management plan. For those members of the council, remember, a couple years ago, there was the settlement with nationwide with all the pharmaceutical companies prosecuted primarily by the Florida Attorney General, but also several local governments and counties who had been involved in separate elements of the class. There was a plan implemented called the Florida Plan that provided for money to go to a variety of sources, including state, nonprofits, hospitals, and local governments. We participated at that time in joining with Lee County so that Lee County would have enough cities within their jurisdiction to qualify them as a regional entity in order to get additional funds. We have received the details we are going to get for our funding on that, and Lisa can give you the extremely large amounts of money that we're going to receive over the next couple decades. But there's also a lot of paperwork and implementation that has to be done. So what the plan requires is that we show that we're going to take those funds and use them towards prevention and treatment options. This is something that the city does not have. Council had previously given direction to work with the county to see if there were other options and with the sheriff's office. Essentially, we're going to join in and adopt the plan that Lee County has adopted, and that additional funding will be assigned to Lee County to proceeding forward.
Motion to approve.
Second. Lori, you had a comment?
Is there an opioid issue within Bonita Springs?
At the time that we went forward and joined in the litigation, there was at least some reporting from the sheriff's office that there were some issues, yes. And of course, the problem is without a local hospital, a lot of the hospitals and claims, they may be Bonita residents, but we don't get the direct information.
So that's why we're going with, but we don't have a serious problem in their schools or?
More importantly, we don't have a program that we can implement for the fairly meager amounts of money that we're receiving.
Oh.
Like $6,000. The dollar amounts, it's an economy scale issue.
Okay. Gotcha.
$3,000 for the next, for 18 years. And I did want to just thank the management team at Lee County who graciously agreed to assist us with all the reporting of that and take on the responsibility. They're going to coordinate with our staff on providing those services within city limits through their Division of Human Services. And we'll be fully covered on the audit processes, and Lisa will be filing the paperwork by the deadline at the end of the month.
Great. Thank you.
Motion and a second? Roll call?
Councilmember Corey.
Hi.
Councilmember Fullick.
Hi.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Purden.
Hi.
Councilmember Carr.
Hi.
Mayor Gibson.
Hi.
In the next few meetings, we are going to be providing that opportunity for you to discuss any further budget items, anything you'd like to continue to address. We'll continue to put this on the agenda each meeting. Update of fiscal year 2025.
Is now the time to continue this for the continuance that we had from the budget meeting discussion?
Good bread and rest.
Yes, the BOGO green sheet.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. I would like to have staff put a BOGO, buy one, get one free green sheet that has both the demos for both those buildings on one for us to have consideration moving forward, if I have support of that.
Yeah. I think that's the direction.
Okay.
Is the sponsor of that green sheet, Mayor Purden?
You know what? Sure. Why not? I don't have to win any more elections, guys. I got this. Well, good. Put it in my name.
And I'll second it.
Look at that. Look at, hey.
Any other discussions on the budget?
Oh, I have one point on the budget, since Lisa's still here. You know, one of the things that I'm involved with is the Bonita Springs Senior Citizen Center, which has now got over 500 members. It's brought to mind that there's a lot of people in Bonita Springs on fixed incomes that are seniors that are aging in place. And so under Florida statutes, you can have a low-income senior homestead exemption in addition to the homestead exemption that we already have. And I don't, do we utilize that, Lisa, or is that something we could utilize to give some relief? Typically, the income level's about $36,000.
Yes.
And they have to have lived so long in their home and so forth, they have to be over the age of 65. But I was just thinking it was something that maybe we ought to take a look at if we haven't already implemented.
Yes, the property appraiser by Florida Law administers that program, and they have the information there on their website, and people can apply for that. So I'm not sure, Derek, if there's anything additional we would do. I think we've opted in for most of the ones that are countywide.
We can issue our.
We could possibly look at that. I do think, I'd want to double-check, but it seems if memory serves, my memory serves, we are in line with what Lee County does. Now, whether or not that's expanded and we can do some.
It's a locally-based homestead exemption that we as a council can implement.
Yes, I do think we have something in place.
The only other thing I could think of, Councilmember Corey, would be if there was something that required action by a property owner within the city to opt into that we could seek, talk to the property appraiser's office about doing a trim insert, which is there's by a certain date, I think it's August 4th or something like that. You have, when they send the trim notices out, sometimes local assessments, things like that, you can put something in there for the benefit of the public. So rate increases, things like that. Maybe there's something that could be added to let people know that there are additional savings.
If you could take a look at it, I'd appreciate it.
If you could give us a chance to research that, I do recall that when the Florida statute has changed and it has been available statewide, I believe that the city has opt into some of those. But let me look and see what's in place here, and we can get with Derek and see what may be in place additionally and bring that back to you all if it's something, if that's direction from council. I just have two minor updates. We did receive notification from Lee County Department of Transportation that they are currently working on some sidewalk repair along Hickory Boulevard, New Beach. This was hurricane recovery repair. This isn't an expansion of any services or park facilities. This is just standardized repair work, so you will see some folks out there. And then also a reminder, we do not have our meeting scheduled for July 22nd. We will be meeting July 16th. And during that time, I would like to make sure we, you received a copy, that we received notification from the Florida League of Cities. They are requesting that we solidify our designated voting delegate, and we will be having an agenda item for that meeting on July 16th to address, so that you can vote on your delegate. That conference is August 14th through the 16th.
Can we--
Oh, Jul-- we're not having July 2nd meeting, I'm sorry, not July 2nd meeting.
Laura, did you have-- Yeah, Chris?
Can we get an update from Lee County as to the status of the restroom repairs on Benita Springs, because it's something that I continually hear about, and would like to know if there's actually any plan to get those fixed?
Um, yes, there was an update recently that I heard, and it's not going to be done for, like, two years, I think. Seriously?
No.
I believe that's what I heard.
All right, we, we need to do something about that, honestly, that's too long. Two years is, that's crazy talk, it's a bathroom.
We're talking about down at the end of Hickory--
Number five.
--Road, this, this county.
Yeah.
And then also, what about the one at Imperial Boat Ramp, is that functioning, or are they functioning?
I don't know if that one's functioning, but five, Beach Five, Access Five, that one has to be fixed. Where it turns, that, two years on bathrooms is craziness. So, from a standpoint of communicating with the county, I don't know who you, I have no problem being lead on that or having our lead do it, but we need to kick that discussion off.
Have they told us why, is it environmental, what is it, Arlene?
Um, there was some ADA requirements they were working through, there was FEMA reimbursements as well that they were working through, so I don't know if there was a temporary look at certain facilities that could be temporarily used in the interim, so we'll make some outreach.
They have porta-potties out there right now, that's, I'm not interested in that. I mean, and if it's a deal where we have to put the money up front to do the bathrooms and then they reimburse us, whatever, I don't, I'm not saying I want to do that, but there has to be a way to get the ball moving in more than two years, 100% has to be a way.
We agreed to give back half a million of the $2 million that we aren't using?
Yeah, maybe.
Two years, that's just crazy.
Two years is nuts. Let's, uh, can we-- Yeah, can we start the conversation with the county, and what is the appropriate, what do you guys feel is the appropriate way to do that?
You know, I'm joking about it, but, hey--
Let's have the talk.
Here's half a million dollars that we're not going to use, would that help you? But, let's find out what's really holding them up, if it's environmental?
Well, the, if it, if it is federally environmental, let's talk to our rep, if it's state environmental, let's talk to our state reps. If it's really one of those things where they're like, oh, it's environmental, it might take a while, and it's two bathrooms that they don't give us, they don't give a number two about, well, then, I think we can up that on their list of importance by applying a little pressure, because, I mean, the, the gateway to the Gulf is a real thing, that's the first huge exit, or that's the first huge beach one that everyone uses. It's just two, it's two, two years is nuts, two years is nuts, so.
That would make it about five years from here.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, five years to fix two bathrooms, no. So, whatever the problem is, we need to figure it out and see if we can kick, you know, kick up the speed, and if that means we make a deal with them where we upfront the money to make it happen, fine, but, I mean, what, we got to get them to the table for a discussion on it. So, I don't know if that's with Harner, or if you would like, some, you guys would like me to reach out to whoever's the current chair right now, I'm happy to, but the discussion should start.
Arlene, do we know if the, the restrooms at Imperial River Boat Ramp are functioning?
I'm not sure.
I mean, I know it's not our property, but would be good to add that into the mix if they're not either.
If we're having the talk, yeah, no.
I don't, I don't think that they are.
And you talk about a, a health issue.
It's crazy, so, um--
We just take care of it and they reimburse us.
I mean, even if, if that's the deal, I mean, I don't ideally want to do that, but even if that's the deal, we can do it way faster, and fine, you, you owe us $2 million, and maybe we figure it out later. But, I have no problem reaching out to Harner and asking him who the appropriate person to talk to about this would be, or whoever the chair is, I have no problem doing that.
It sounds like our lead's got the direction, let's find out what the problem is, and then we can address it.
Yeah. And it can also kind of signal to them, hey, they're about to complain or do a letter or ask you to do something, so, you know, poke, maybe that'll get them to move. Because if you're asking, you're asking them for a reason, I assume they would like a phone call rather than a letter.
Prefer in writing.
Yeah.
Anything else, Arlene?
That's it, thank you.
Mayor and Councilmember reports? Jamie?
I don't really have much, just thank all the emergency agencies for coming tonight and speaking, and I just have to say to just reiterate that it doesn't matter what color of shirt that the fire department's wearing, and if they arrive or if they're near somebody that needs help, if it's a white shirt, he's going to help and I'll wait for someone over from, to come over and take care of it. And, um, yeah, they do have a new fire truck that's going into service, they're hoping right around 4th of July, that's it.
Cool. Bessie?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Laura?
Well, I did have a meeting with Commander Lee, as I think everybody else did, it was one, it was good and informative. And BSU did win several really outstanding awards, including best water in 10 states and best management for maintenance and keeping, you know, the water moving, so, that was a, if, I wish they were still here, because they could tell you what the awards were. And again, congratulations to Army on their 250th anniversary, my husband's Army, so, go Army, beat Navy. And, um, and again, that whole event and all of the future, 4th of July, Memorial Day, are going, they're sponsored by people that sometimes want to be noted and sometimes don't want to be noted, but the taxpayers are not paying for, you know, Donald Trump to be sitting present in anywhere, you know, whatever, but, so, it's just not announced on the networks enough that, really, we're not paying for it as citizens, whereas there are a lot of things here that we're paying for citizens that I have issues with, but, and I went to a wonderful, the, the Lee County Emergency Operations Center opened, it is amazing, it's up on Artis Avenue, right next to the prison, and I did ask if the prison was, you know, like, certified, we don't have to evacuate, you know, and lose people, and no, no, they're all good, so, this, this center is right next door, and it is amazing how it's organized, and, you know, showers and cots, and then sections divided where lights light up, it, it was just really impressive, and, um, they're open, and they have provided small business, business plan, like, the real key, really key thing is, do a plan, do a plan, do a plan, and they break it down, that's pretty cool, and then they have a pamphlet, which we get, I hope, and if not, I have some, and then I'll get more, that has every number you ever need in trouble, like, what's happening with garbage, or what's happening with, you know, X, and it's all right there, and they also give you very, very common sense, practical things to do, so, I thought it was great, and I've distributed it to a few, but, you know, it'll be here at City Hall.
Thank you, Laura. Chris?
A couple of things. Benita Bay asked Representative or Commissioner Malika if they're, if the county would help in terms of getting Benita Beach designated critically eroded by Department of Natural Resources, and received a reply back that the county was not going to try to help on that at all, so, again, that impacts it from the standpoint that, uh, there, I don't know how much money we spent in restoring the sand, was it like 35 million combined effort in all parts?
I could only speak for South Benita Beach, which is about 9 million.
I think altogether, it was more than that for the entire beach.
Yeah, the, all the whole stretch, but the portion you're speaking--
But the be, okay, but even at 9 million, if, if we can get it critically eroded designation, we can get further funds to maintain it, seems, it seems unfortunate that we, that all that money was spent, and then we can't do, can't spend enough money to keep it maintained, we have to wait for another hurricane to destroy it.
Can I ask you a question on that, Chris? I know it's a public comment, but I'm just, curiosity, they denied, what was the reason for the denial that they gave you guys?
They didn't give a reason, they just said, it's not up, you know, that they're not going to, it's up to the state, they don't want to push on it, basically.
Because I, back in the day, there was another part of the beach who was trying to get designated, and I think at one point even Benita Bay, and part of it was, there's some list that you have to get on, and you can't get on the list unless you go through this test, and I believe it was tested and it didn't fall into the criteria at that time, but this was before the storm, this was a year, six years ago, or something like that?
They're still relying on that test.
So, they're still relying on the six-year-old test that was pre-hurricane?
That's right, pre-Irma, pre-Ina.
Interesting, okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, the wonder gardens, the otter exhibit is basically done, there's some agency, and I can't remember the name of it now, that act, that has to come in and approve the fencing that's behind the otter exhibit, I guess it's all about, is the fencing adequate enough to, to prevent the otters from escaping, it's a chain link fence, it's been there forever, and the agency is busy and so forth, but hopefully by the end of June, well, we're almost at the end of June, but hopefully by the end of June, they'll get it done, and they can have a sort of a grand opening of the otter exhibit. Pleased to announce that Benita Springs Senior Centers has got a capital campaign going, we got one donation of $750,000 to, as seed money on the capital campaign, so, that's in place, the demand for, as I said before, we got over 500 members, they're seniors, they're typically aging in place, so there's a real demand for the services that are being given. The Arts Benita was given a $2 million gift to hopefully expand the studio space at the Visual Arts Center up on 041, so that's good news, they's working hard to deal with that. And then with respect to committees, I think we need to be somewhat flexible in our, in our approach to committees, there's, there's a lot of interest on, on the, with respect to the arts in downtown, I, you know, and we expect a lot, or we ask our staff to do a lot, there are, there are people that are willing to participate on that specific type of project to see what we can do to improve the arts downtown, to provide, you know, an artistic look to the properties across from what Baron Coyer's doing, to help with whatever it needs to do at the Banyon Tree. You know, in the old, in the old days, in the fence industry, they usually called those skunk works, and the skunk work was, you know, a bunch of people that were willing to invest time to better design something and get it done, and a lot of airplanes that were used in World War II were done that way, to maximize altitude and speeds. So, I just, I think as we go through these committees, figuring out which ones work and which ones don't work, I think we need to have some flexibility where citizens want to get involved in certain kinds of projects, that we go ahead and figure out a way to let that happen, where they can sort of help out in terms of doing some of the planning for some of these kinds of things. So, with that in mind, that's all I've got.
Part of mine was--
I forgot, I forgot the most important thing I got.
The article.
The ar, I, I sent you each a briefing paper, just so the public aware, is aware of it, Benita Estero Rail Trail was unanimously placed on the Florida Forever Funding List, the feedback after the meeting said that the evident commitment of, of Estero, Benita Springs, Coyer County, to, assuming this thing goes through, fund a port, major portion of the purchase price, was key to the decision. All these projects come to Florida Forever, and they're all presented by the lobbyists, and we're the only city community that actually got behind something with some money. John McClain and I spoke at the Florida Forever, we're the only city officials in, that, at this meeting that had anything to say about any of the projects that they were reviewing, they all felt that was important, and so, I think we sort of went from the bottom of the funding pile more up towards the middle as a result, so we'll see how it goes, we can possibly get some mon, money in the state fiscal year 26, so, but anyway, there's a little bit of a briefing paper for you on that, so, that's it.
Thanks, Chris.
Yes, sir. Well, just to any of the folks that are on the Art and Public Places Board that are concerned, they have done a phenomenal job over the last 20 years, they continue to do a phenomenal job, and I would tell you that we encourage people to come to the meetings, however, our attendance last year, I believe, was a total of seven people that came in, as far as the public goes. However, I learned something, Nicole and the staff do a phenomenal job of getting RFPs out, and lately, we have not seen responses to RFPs for public art. We've got the sculptures that are going to be going in at Midtown, and they're pretty sizable pieces, so I reached out to some of the national sculptors that we know, and I got some very honest answers, this probably affects just about everything we do on an RFP basis, they're so expensive for these vendors, especially small vendors, to put together proposals, and then they say, you know, I'm competing against 5, 10, 15 different entities, and as a small business owner, I just don't have the time or the money, so they stop responding. So, now what we're going to be getting is large commercial entities that are going to be the only respondents. I don't know how we solve the problem, but I think it was interesting to, to find out from a, an artist who actually is a businessperson to say, it's just too costly for me to reach out and respond to all these RFP, RFPs, when the reality is, I might get one out of 100, time is money. So, it's just something to think about, that may be affecting us in other RFPs, we put out that we're not necessarily getting the best contractor or response, we're getting the person that has a team that does nothing but respond to RFPs. The gift that keeps on giving, my dear fellow councilmembers, Benita Springs Elementary School, brought to my attention by one of our citizens, I know, that the governor signed a bill that made local government more responsible for historic buildings and structures, that's absolutely true, so, this individual, there's two of them, are expecting us to do something legally, so I'm just going to remind everybody again, and you all know this, we don't own that building, we don't own that school, and the thought of us as a city getting involved in some sort of litigation against the school board to preserve, and this is it, preserve a building that we already know, engineering-wise, et cetera, nothing can be done, we're all upset about it, but it's over, I cannot think that how, just unconscionable to me that we would delay the building of that school another year or two, so that two or three people feel that they're relevant in our community. I do know for a fact, and I'm putting it out there, we were told that there was a petition with over 1,300 signatures from local citizens that had been presented, it was never presented to this council, or to our city staff, nor was it presented to the school board, so I'm going to say that petition never existed, and the fact that somebody's out there saying that there are 1,300 people, it's a lie, so I, I, I would just challenge somebody to, to counter that, that it's not truthful. And, you know, I, I grew up most of my life in Fort Lauderdale, moved here 23 years ago. I don't interfere in Fort Lauderdale's politics and tell them what they should do, I resent the fact that former members of our community who now live on the other coast, or in other states, are trying to tell this council what we should do with our city. Again, just my opinion, but I'm getting tired of getting those emails and telephone calls, I'm sure staff is too. There was a reasonable request made by one of our residents and business owners, could we not take the bricks from the building and build either a walkway or a road, use them in a road project, and the thought is a good one, the problem is, those bricks are so unstructurally sound, they can't be used to build. The problem is those bricks are so unstructurally sound, they can't be used to build. First thing that came up, can they be pressure washed? The answer is no, they would fall apart. So it's a great idea, I think. Plus, we're being asked to store the building's bricks. At the library? I'm just kidding. So again, I, I think we need to let.
Good bread store.
Yeah, I think we need to let that go as a city and we'll hold the school board's feet to the fire. I don't, I hope we won't have to do that as far as getting us the facade and just move on. On a positive note, congratulations to our Florida Panthers who won their second Stanley Cup last night. And isn't it funny that in the last 10 Stanley Cups, two Florida teams have played in seven of them? We've won two, Tampa's won two. And can't forget our Florida Everblades who won three of the last four Kelly Cups. So I've got friends up north that are asking, what are you doing in Florida with hockey? Apparently the right thing. But I, I think it's great that the Panthers won it again, very historic and something to be enjoying.
That's all I've got. Jim?
I, I do want to recognize, one of, a developer had a public information meeting this past week. And what I truly do appreciate is beyond the required legal notification to the residents surrounding this proposed development, they actually opened up with Zoom. And so that at the meeting, there were over 100 people in physical attendance and there were over 113 people in Zoom. And I think this is something that I don't know how we make this an official requirement as developments and provide these informational meetings to the public to require that that access is available for those that cannot attend to provide their input. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Jim. For me, I'd gotten an email about a piece of art donation for the city. I think I passed it on. I just wanted to make sure you got that and you were looking at it.
I did.
Okay.
Hopefully it's not the roller skating banana that Nigel was.
And then I just had a question on the, the, is it a study or DPC's doing for the Lyles area? What, what kind of timeline are we looking at to hear back from them?
I, I will need to check with Nicole. I know she was, they were doing an in-house review as first, I believe. The architect has already been here on site, met with Jason and had access to the former Dixie Moon site as well as the Lyles Hotel and the Plaza. So I'll have to check with her and, on dates and when we expect something back.
Okay, thank you. And then for John, I've been sending you some emails about online permitting, including AI and things like that. And just want to see if you're able to talk to Jacobs and see what can be done about that. And I know there's a push to kind of streamline permitting nationwide, so just want to make sure you're on top of that. Thanks, sir. And other than that, I'm good. So, public comment. I want everybody to get up at once.
Are due and leave.
All right, no public comment? Motion to adjourn?